Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 18th, 2018 meeting of the school board for the Dover School District. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Rauchser.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Emig.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Britton.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, first up is our presentations tonight. We have another update from Mr. Stefanovic with the township.
Good evening, everyone. This past month, we had eleven major building permits for homes in the area that were pulled. Fourteen other. For the questions that I had last month, Mr. Cook had one about the open lots behind Members First, and that's called Donwood, I believe, is our abbreviation for that. And we are continuing to get building permit requests back there, and it's happening. The term I had here is it's somewhat active. It's not a super big thing that's going on, but they just continue to put one here, one there. I know there was only one there for a long time, but now there's quite a few others, so... And then the other question from Mr. Emig, he was asked about Hilton and Seventy-four. There's two tasks going on there. The south side, I believe, is where you're asking about where the Burger King might be. That's what's on the agenda. Right now, the developer there is working with PennDOT, trying to get approval for a right-in, right-out onto Seventy-four. I believe that is a hang-up. PennDOT doesn't like that, but the developers do. That's how we get traffic moving. So there is some work going on in there. I don't know how it's gonna end up yet, but that's what's happening there. And on the north side of Hilton, the Lidl, which is, if you're familiar, is a store that was gonna start there months and months and months ago, I believe it's a year now, they have come to us now with some preliminary plans to reuse the existing building. So we've asked them to, you know, put together a formal plan so that we know what's gonna happen there. There's another one at East Canal and Park Street, right out here. That's Norma's Ridge. That's one that I heard a little bit about last time, but I didn't know a whole lot. That's a forty-unit development that's gonna be starting before too long. It is designed to be geared towards the elderly. It's a little bit smaller property, sometimes two or three connected together with their garages connected and stuff like that, with only one or two bedrooms in them, I believe, is their design point, but that's starting to move. Terra Vista is the one that's down at Admir and Davidsonburg. I know Davidsonburg was asked about a couple of months ago. That's a hundred and fifty-four units. That's starting down there, and they're probably at about the same place that you are with the new building, that the land is getting flatter and they're building up the, you know, the base for what's gonna happen there. Another one at Hilton Avenue and Bull. That's out the other end of Hilton. There is, I believe, there is an approval for a commercial warehouse business going out there on that corner. So that's a commercial side thing, but that could benefit us all and get some development out in that end of our township also. So, and then the last thing, of course, our building is continuing. We've had our share of rock. I hope we are pretty much through that. There are some ditches that had to be pretty deep to get down below certain levels, and we think we're making good progress, and the building is pretty much underway, or under roof and enclosed right now, I believe, so we need to be able to get our equipment inside in winter weather, so we're all hoping that winter doesn't come too soon, but we'll get there. So, is there any questions?
Just a comment. It's very nice to have you come and share what's going on. It's wonderful to hear that, and, you know, I just wanted to make, take some time for me to do that, but thank you for coming, and it's good to hear what's going on.
Sure, appreciate it, yep.
I also want to thank the township for working with the district in such a cooperative way for the cross-country issues and concerns that we had, you know, from a safety standpoint, so we very much appreciate that as well.
Pretty good. I'll let the people know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have our budget presentation from Mrs. Krim and Mrs. Benko.
So, as you're aware, as part of the budget process, we sent out a survey to all of our email addresses that we have in the district. We released it through, she's putting it up, Survey Monkey on September fourteenth, and we closed it on September thirtieth. We are pleased with the responses. We received seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine responses to the survey. When, you'll see in a minute, is that the majority, of course, are parents because those are the email addresses we have, as well as the staff. One of the things during the business meeting in September that Mrs. Benko and I attended, we sat with Seth Grove, and we talked to him about how do we best reach out to community members and business owners to get more of their feedback during the survey. One of the things we are definitely going to do during the partnership meeting in January is collect email addresses from all of our business partners that we invite and that come to that meeting, because, you know, email is the quickest way to do this and the best way for them to do the survey. So, as again, as you'll see, mostly parents filled this out, a number of staff, which was great, some students, some community members, and on this slide, you'll see the demographics of the age of who did it. So, rated in order of most importance, the most important, what came up to be the issue of most importance is safety and security of the schools. And as you have already seen this school year and the plans we put in place, and with the building project, and some of the things we talked about the other night with Mrs. Johnson, is safety and security is a priority for us as well, so that will remain to be a priority for us as we move into the budget process. And you can look at this, but you can see also a very close second is academic support for struggling students. Again, hopefully, what we're sharing with you is you're seeing that that is absolutely our focus as well, both with curriculum and with support and with, you know, classes and all of those kinds of things. So, that is basically, in general, what they told us. The next slide, well, it's just, so, what you have in front of you is the survey, and if you went on to do the survey, you will see that one of the options for who does the survey was not board members, because we knew your time would come. So, what we would like you to do tonight before you leave, if you, this is the survey, if you would fill it out and give us the results, this along will help us guide the direction we go with the survey. We are meeting quite often now on the survey. We will begin having principal meetings to have specifics about their budget. We've already met about staffing with them, so we are going to begin putting, basically, the skeleton of the survey together every month. We will give you an update, and we will bring that to you through both committee and the board meeting. In November, to next month, you will have a recommendation for you to approve the Act One resolution, as you do every year during budget season, and any suggested tax increase that you, you know, would like to consider. And then again, we will just keep you updated monthly on this. One of the things I would like to add, we do have a meeting with Laurel Oswald, Mrs. Benko and I, on October thirtieth, so she can sit down with us as well and take a look at all of the housing developments and how they will, how they're going to affect our building, you know, our building program, how they're affecting our elementary schools, so we can get a better handle on that as we do budget this year as well, because we are looking at a couple other issues. Comprehensive plan tonight, which we'll talk about a little bit, one of the questions we did ask on the budget survey, because we thought that was a great place to do it while we had people, is how did people want to reconfigure if, in fact, we did reconfigure? So, we had some discussion, and I'll let Mr. Delauter talk about that in a minute, but we have that information too from people. So, again, if you would fill out your budget survey and have it to us tonight, we would appreciate it, and we will move forward, and we'll keep the conversation going, and then we can go from there.
Are there any initial thoughts on items that are the utmost importance to the board as we move into the first steps of our budgeting process here within, in between now and next November that, you know, we need to be aware of? I think the last board meeting, when Kirsten was talking, you all voiced your opinion on how important the social-emotional aspect was going into budgetary and all safety, also safety and security. So, any ideas at this point that you guys have that we should be made aware of going into that process?
Well, I think the big challenge that you have here, looking at this graph right now, is that there's really not a huge difference between what's most important and what's least important. I mean, everything is pretty much important across the board to us, and your challenge is going to be figuring out really how to prioritize each of those items that are on there and balance them out, because they all deserve attention. So, this is where I know it gets real fun for our administrative team to try and figure out how to deal with all those, but you can see nothing drops down to the point-nine-five area, stuff like that. It's all pretty much straight down, so, good luck.
But, well, we have lots of other data. If you remember, you saw some of the survey information that Mrs. Johnson shared, so we know where, we have needs there. We are applying for a Safe Schools Grant, but we also know that so is the rest of the world, so it is guaranteed twenty-five thousand, but we applied for more than that, so we know that is important. We have our achievement data, which you will be, you'll have a presentation next month on that, so when it talks academic support for struggling students, we do have some thoughts about that as well. So, we've actually, using our data, have been thinking about this, but I did find, safety and security is a really hot topic now. It's in the news, and so that doesn't surprise me at all. And, so, yes, thank you. Appreciate that, because, yeah, yeah.
Just another question I would have, then, from like a cross-tabulation standpoint, are all of the results similar for each of the groups that responded? I mean, did the parents respond the way the students responded, the way the community members responded, or is there some variances there that community ranks something higher than parents ranks, things like that?
Yes. After looking deep into the survey, with the majority, almost five-hundred of the respondents being parents.
It was safety and security.
It was safety and security right now, because I think that is the hot button, and special ed was high up there, too. The students that responded, some of them were, they had some good comments in, you know, other things, like their importance, maybe athletics, or arts, or, you know, support, but I think the majority of the respondents were the parents, and everything I heard on that end was safety and security.
Yeah, that was a lot.
How was the response rate on this compared to previous surveys that you had done?
I think last year, we had about six-hundred-and-fifteen or six-hundred-and-thirty, around there responses, so this one was seven-twenty-nine, I believe. So, a little better. I think social media, people are starting to move on that. Also, you know, the push to Skyward has helped us also.
Yes, yes, yeah, we're reaching more parents.
I think it's interesting that, in light of some of the comments that you've made earlier in the year with the staff requesting help with the social and emotional needs of the students and how to deal with things like that, that not only are they thinking that, but also the parents are saying that that is critically important, so I think as a board, we have to look at that as a very serious request and need.
That was part, from staff, there were definitely some comments on there as to getting more help, as to how to deal with some of those situations.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at the bars, other than safety and security, I think the next three were all kind of tied to, you know, support, yeah.
Exactly, same idea, yeah, really, yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question, but it has to do with the survey. Does this need plugged in, or don't it matter during the meeting?
Does it need?
His laptop's not...
Laptop isn't plugged in.
Oh, it's not plugged in? Is it charged?
I guess it's lit up and burning.
If it's lit up, you're good.
Okay.
I just want to add, and I don't, I don't want this to sound the wrong way. I certainly agree with everything with the safety, security, and struggling students, but I also want to caution to make sure we don't forget those overachievers and the higher level kids, too, that we kind of think, okay, well, they'll be fine on their own, because there are those higher-level achievers, they don't need as much help, when in fact, I think we need to make sure that we're being cognizant, that we give them the support that they need as well. I've talked to numerous parents who have left the district because, in fact, one of my son's friends was commenting on the gifted program at Central versus our gifted program at Wildstown, and just the huge difference, and she couldn't talk enough great things about it, so, I mean, I understand we have constraints, and there are issues that, you know, we're never gonna be central, but at the same time, I think we just need to make sure that we keep that in mind as we work forward with those higher, higher-functioning kids as well.
Well, hopefully, too, you're seeing a lot of focus on the individual child. We're doing a lot more, whether it's social-emotional, whether it's the academic, whether it's interventions, whether it's enrichment, we are really doing our best to hone down to the single child, the child, the child by itself, not the groups of kids, the child by itself. So, yes, you're exactly right, and I think philosophically, that's been our focus this year, is on individual, every kid, every day, you know, those kinds of things. So, hopefully, that will get better as well. I would imagine that will get better also with our curriculum writing and knowing exactly, you know, what we're teaching and our instructional strategies and how we are differentiating better for kids, so hopefully, they, people see that get better as well.
Well, and even in the advanced programming, which is a little further down on the priority list, too, I know, I've talked to people in the community who really stress, you know, the workforce development aspect and how some of the students aren't as prepared, we seem not to be offering some of the, I don't want to say, because they're not really AP courses anymore, but the higher, higher courses specifically in like engineering and the STEM type, the BIOS and stuff, those kinds of things, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have one more presentation tonight, but that's going to come under a committee report, so we'll save that for the Capitol Steering Committee. So, at this point, we have our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of the agenda. It's a three-minute period. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Board President's Communication. We did not have an executive session tonight, so there's nothing to report from that. So, we will move into the Capitol Project Steering Committee. Before we have Mr. Nelson's report here, I'd like to just go over a couple of things that we talked about in the committee. The administrative team and our architects from Crabtree, Werbal, and Associates presented us with some initial thoughts related to the renovation of the existing high school to become the Dover Middle School at this point. They're looking at doing this project in two phases over two summers, with some of the work to happen, whether it's demolition, construction, facelift, HVAC material, that kind of stuff. The administrative team has basically been tasked with going back and reviewing all of the thoughts before us. Obviously, everything's included right now, everything on the wish list, and needless to say, we can't do everything that's on the wish list, so that's gonna be reviewed, and the team will come back to us again with some additional thoughts as they work to pare this down. So, that was the first thing that we discussed, and then the second thing was change orders, and these are the change orders we like. We went through five different change orders that have occurred in the project at this point, a lot of them related to the excavation of the site, site work related to the York County Conservation District requirements. In the end, one of the site, I'd like to commend Mr. Nelson, one of the change orders had started out at being a cost of a hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars, and he was managed to get that down to about seventy-five thousand, so kudos to him on that for working hard to do that, as well as the cooperation of our architects. But in the end, out of the five change orders with the pluses and the minuses, we actually have a net credit of about twenty-five thousand dollars, so those are the change orders we like, and they promised us that those will be the only kind that we will see for the rest of this project, so this was a good night from that standpoint. So, that was what we had discussed. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Nelson. I understand he has pictures of pipes and blocks and all that for us to see tonight, so we'll let him do his thing.
Okay, so, made a little progress since we talked last, so, this is a slide that I just came upon today, and I wanted to share it with you, so this is actually what our front of our building will look like, so we're building this building with two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-four hundred square feet for fourteen-hundred students. Of course, our bid date was June two thousand and eighteen. It comprises a CTC, pretty robust CTC program, as well as an auditorium and a new athletic field. So, my next slide, Roy drives us home. According to PDE Report Thirty, which was published in two thousand and sixteen, we are the most cost-effective new school bid since two thousand and fifteen. That's pretty substantial. That, that's, we're actually, whoops, what happened? I lost a slide somewhere. I lost everything, you know?
I'll have to do it for you.
Okay, so, good, excellent. So, this slide really kind of sets it home. So, our base bid was fifty-five thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. We were five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars under our projected budget, or about one percent, a hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents per square foot. I did a presentation on this today, and there was probably a dozen people in the room, and I think every one of them said, wow, how'd you do that? We had one lady in the room, theirs is at two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars a square foot right now, so we have a very, have done a very good job at keeping these costs to a minimum, so I just thought these were interesting, so...
Dave, quick question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, the auditorium and that shot there, are they the actual VR things, what ours will look like? Is that, okay?
Not quite. It's close, but not exact.
Okay.
He says exact, okay, so it is exact. All right.
I'll believe the architect.
Yeah, okay, so it is, it is. I know the, when you get to the next slide, that's what the common area will look like.
Okay.
So, we have blocks arriving, and, go ahead. You're still digging ditches, and we're laying block, and, go ahead. I was told I had to hurry. So, this is just an overview of the site. You can see out in the far reaches there. We have block up to the ground level. Go ahead. I kind of alluded to this last week, where we put these steel rods up in the block, so go ahead, next page. This is just another shot of it here, and, one more time. So, this is what it looks like up close, so you have these steel rods sticking up, and these will get filled with concrete, so we have a solid, almost a concrete foundation, if you will. These little eye-looking things here, there's another piece that slips into that, that connects, you put in between your bricks as you're bringing your bricks up, so it ties the two walls together, and we get insulation in between all this, two inches of styrofoam. So, go ahead. That's what it looks like when it's done. We get the styrofoam, this is the, this is the inside over here, this is the outside over here, so the styrofoam's on the inside of the wall, so that's what it looks like. And you can see the, back up one. So, you can see, one of the things I wanted to point out was the thickness of the footer. This footer's probably a good six inches thicker than most times what you would put a footer on, so it gives us that ability, if we ever want to throw a second story on, we already have the foundation and stuff in for it. You can see all the steel down here in the bottom, and then we're starting out with sixteen-inch thick block, so, they weigh a good bit. Go ahead. Once it's, it's, we got the insulation on the inside, we get it all done, we sprayed the outside down with this black sealant to seal it and keep moisture and stuff like that coming in, and you'll notice now we have rods sticking up even further, and all these cores are filled up, so we're solid concrete. Go ahead. This is a shot of some of the plumbing going in. You'll notice the little red line coming off the top there. We pressurize this to eighty pounds. It's a sewer line. It's not gonna have any pressure in, but we have to to make sure it doesn't leak, so we put eighty pounds in, and it has to hold it for at least an hour. Go ahead. This is just another shot of a back wall. The little orange caps on there are required by OSHA, so if somebody falls, they don't impale themselves on them. This is how we get our piping, our electrical and all that kind of stuff up inside the block wall. We start underneath the slab grade and bring it up through the middle like that, so that would all be on interior walls, not on the exterior wall, so some shots of digging. We now have a temporary driveway, roadway, whatever you want to call it. We have a couple of these on the site right now, so try to keep the mud to a minimum. This was just an overview shot. The area to your left, as you're looking at that, is all CTC, greenhouse, and starting into some of the classrooms on the far right, okay? Is that it?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Any questions?
Is there a goal or an objective to get done before, like we get to real cold weathers, or certain things that have to happen?
Yeah. We really want to get out of the ground. That's our key right now. We want to get everything up to ground level. We'd like to get the slab cord. We'd like to get up, get up to the first floor, maybe get the, maybe even get the roof on if we can, or at least get some of it on. I don't know if we're gonna make it. It's gonna, it's gonna be pushing it. If we get some dry weather, it'll start going a lot quicker once we get some dry weather and get out of the mud. Right now, we're fighting mud every day, so, which is one of the reasons we put the temporary roadways in, just to get, keep out of the mud. It makes it go so much faster, so... One of the other things I didn't point it out in the slide that you would have noticed was, most of the time, when you backfill around block, they do it with dirt. We're backfilling around the block with stone. That's not by our choice. The contractor said we like to do it that way better. It's better, it's easier for us, and it's actually a better system than putting dirt back in, so, but yeah, we'd like to get it, we'd like to get it under roof, but before it gets super cold. I got my doubts.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. Next, we have our facilities and safe and supportive schools report, Mr. Emig and Mr. Rauchser.
Tonight, we had two items that we brought up for discussion. The first one was fees for the facilities, and Mr. Nelson was in our meeting as well. We have currently, we have to have two individuals that are in charge of wall openings and closing at the different schools, and Mr. Nelson is recommending that we also include a cleanup charge, so currently, we're paying seventeen-fifty. He's recommending a flat rate of thirty-five hours. And also, the charge for weekend usage. We also are recommending that we have a no-show or a cancellation fee, except for the weather, of fifty dollars a day, because we currently have a group that has booked the school for a couple of months, and they'll come in sometime and say they don't want to use the facility, so we're out of additional funds of groups that could use the building, but Mr. Nelson has to tell them it's already reserved, so... Sunday morning usage at the high school, starting next year, we like to recommend that we don't allow any usage in there till noon and after, because we have certain custodians that, it's a Sunday, and of course, if they're like any other individual, they like to attend church, and it's tough to get custodians in on a Sunday before noon, so we're recommending that to take place. And Dover is the only school out of the very few that charge a utility fee. And Dover is the only school out of the very few that charge a utility fee. And we're recommending that we increase that fee to 10%. However, all this has to go to the Policy Committee for the updates, but that's what we're looking at. The other item that we had, and this falls under Policy 701.1, which is a naming request. We got a request from the Dolores Krebs family. They would like to name the library at Wildstown under her name. She was a teacher here for 49 years. However, we would like to get in contact with Mrs. Huffnagle to see if there's any other individuals that would qualify or come up to that, that are looking to be named. But of course, that has to go to the naming policy. We cannot recommend that. But I mean, we're recommending that, but it has to go to the policy under naming. So. Those are the items that we had discussed tonight was mostly the fees and then also the Dolores A. Krebs naming that to the library.
Questions for Mr. Emick or Mr. Rollhauser?
I have a question. Did, did we do any, this is regarding the rental fees for, I guess, the facilities would include like the football field, schools, all, all facilities?
We had gone through, and Mr. Nelson did as well as I did. We went through other schools in York County and pretty much, most of them come up to about the same price that we're charging. The only school that we can't get a price on for the stadium, of course, is Spring Grove, because that is the Papermaker Stadium. And we don't know if they have to go to PH Blackfeller to get a recommendation on that, but that's the only school that will not give a price. It's to be determined. But we did check the other schools. Mr. Nelson had a couple more schools that he checked than I did. So.
I just, I have had people that are affiliated with the Dover area sports clubs concerned about the prices. I just was wondering what comparatively we are. So, thanks.
But of course, we have to, all this has to go to the Policy Committee and of course, that has to go to Mr. Pratt for his review as well. Mr. Rollhauser, anything else you want to add?
No, that covers it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources with Mr. Cook and Mrs. Britton.
We had a number of items on our agenda this evening. First one was the 1718 audit update. As you know, we're in the process there of, of going through the audit as we always do. Same, same message again, this month as we had last month, no unexpected bumps in the road. It's been pretty smooth. Again, reinforcing what we said last month, that it looks like that year is going to end pretty much as a wash based primarily the difference being the Lincoln Benefit Trust and the catastrophic funds were lower this year than what they had been in the past and were budgeted based on past several years. So the good news is it's looking like it's pretty much going to come out as a wash. So that will be on our November, November agenda for approval of the audit update. And then at that point, that will be submitted to the state then for final approval by November 30th. Next item was our Act One Tax Resolution. As Tracy mentioned earlier, that is going to be on our November agenda as well, in our board meeting agenda. At this point, the, the base rate for the state is 2.3%, which is the maximum increase for taxes. Based on a numbers of demographics and things that play into whatever it is that the state uses, they, they adjust each individual district based on those criteria. And our adjusted index is 3.1. So what that means is we approve that resolution next month, that our maximum tax increase that we can go to the public with is 3.1% for 1920. Correct? Okay, for 1920. So look for that to come our way. That doesn't lock us into doing that. It just basically sets the stage. It sets the parameters which we have to plan for. The next item was the 1920, or the 2019 to 2020 budget update. It's, as you can imagine, in process right now. Even though we're looking at last year's, we're dealing with this year's, now we're planning to have for next year. According to our budget timeline, things are moving along. By the end of October, the site-based allocations will be given to building administrators for them to begin the process of, of working the details out about their individual buildings. We had a nice discussion. We had several staff members with us tonight in our committee meeting and we had a nice discussion about some of the, the positive things that are happening with our current budget process. And one of the things I, I learned tonight was about the just-in-time purchasing, which was a very positive thing and how, how that allows the staff members to really be able to gear their purchases very quickly and tailor it to what they really need. And so we got some really good, positive feedback with that. And then the final item on our agenda was the crowdfunding policy, which if you recall, last month, we talked, or we approved budget, or we approved the Policy 702, which was grants, gifts and donations. Kind of in a nutshell, that, that policy dealt with money coming into the district through like lunch money, for example. We've had a number of approvals for donated money for, you know, lunches for kids that couldn't afford lunches and that sort of thing. 702 kind of gears toward that. But as you recall, we had also talked about kind of a sister policy coming along with that, and that's 702.1, which is crowdfunding. A lot of staff members have been using social media and GoFundMe pages and things like that to be able to go out and solicit funds. What crowdfunding will do will be set parameters and set procedures in place that, of how those kind of things take place. And what, you know, the, the district really needs to have some oversight into what's being done out there so that it, it can protect their staff members, protect the district from liability and, and still get the, the, the need accomplished there. So got another nice discussion there. Some of the things that were raised will go to the Policy Committee for, you know, final adjustment and approval with the intent of bringing that back to us next month for, for final approval. So, Amy, did I miss anything? Okay, so I think that's it then for our committee.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Cook or Mrs. Britton? Okay, next we have our Curriculum and Professional Development Committee. Mr. DeLauder.
Do you want to take that, that issue first?
Sure, we could do that. We do have an early graduation request that we need to vote on. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a request for early graduation.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion of second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Mr. DeLauder?
Thank you. Okay, as Mrs. Kroom mentioned earlier, we did meet for our first, and I just lost. Yeah, thank you. It just went on my head. A comprehensive plan meeting. We started out the, the meeting by making introductions with everyone that was there. And we do have a, a, a good mix of, and, because required, of administration, staff and community members. So after the, the introductions, we did talk just briefly, went over and looked at our mission, vision and belief statements. You know, just kind of discussed, is, is that where we need to be as far as those statements? And is, was there anything that we really wanted to change on any of those? Which I believe the, the consensus was, we were going to let them go at, to, with what we have. Next, we went on and began just kind of going an overview of the process of what we're going to do. And then, yeah, gosh, I apologize. I'm losing my train of thought here tonight. It's been a long day.
We moved to the redistricting.
Yes, and then we moved, yeah, and then we moved into the redistricting. If you look at your budget survey, one of the questions that was asked of everybody was, what is your preference on redistricting our elementary schools? And at first, there are three options, having four K to five, basically what we have now currently. Changing to a K two, or two K two and three five buildings. We're doing one K one, one K, or two, three, and one for five building. And I believe the respondents initially was over on between the two, the first two. So we, we kind of pushed away the, the one building of each and concentrated on the K five and the K two, three, five buildings. And I, I will say, we broke into four different groups and had kind of like small group discussions, listed pros and cons of each. And I will tell you from personal experience, I went in there with a clear idea of where I wanted and which one I wanted. Walked out of there not so clear. There are definitely pros and cons to both. Came back as a large group, again, discussed it. And then we, as each group, were made to make a choice of, of which one we wanted to do. And as, as you can imagine, with the limited information that we had, the, the, the results were mixed on that. Lot of good questions were raised, a lot of good discussion raised on that. So from, from the administration and from our standpoint, should we have to make that decision, it's going to be a tough decision. And I think we, if we plan on doing it in the near future, we need to really start thinking about it now. Because this is going to be kind of like our building, it's going to be a multi-year decision for us to make on this. But again, for our first meeting, I think it was, well, a lot of good discussion amongst the groups. So I'm, I'm looking forward to, to our next meeting next month to continue the process. Mrs. Herman, Mrs. Mailey, anything?
We just talked a little bit at the end too about departmentalization.
Yes.
And there were some pros and cons. We only had about 10, 15 minutes to talk about that. So, but it, you know, just some good questions being raised once again. And, you know, some like it, some don't. What are the pros and cons of doing it? And what would that look like if we did move from, you know, the K five to the smaller buildings and the pros and cons, pros and cons of that? So definitely need further discussion on that.
Two hours went very quickly with that. So.
All righty, any questions? Thank you. Okay, we are at our miscellaneous period for any other comments or observations from our board members tonight. Does anybody have anything?
I just want to go back again to, to what Mr. Nelson, his, his presentation. You know, I, I said before that I always thought that we were getting a lot of building for the money. It's nice to get that confirmation from someone outside the district that, that we did indeed do a very good job of, of being fiscally responsible with, with building this building. Again, I think kudos to Mr. Nelson, the, the committee that was there, as well as our architects on listening to our concerns with, with keeping this building as, as low as possible, but still providing us with, with what we need. So again, I, I get kudos to everybody involved for, for that outcome.
Anybody else?
I've been going to the meetings on Wednesday morning, the construction meetings, and I thought, sure, my eyes would glaze over if I don't understand anything. He explains everything so well. And I, I know exactly what's going on. I ask him a million questions and he has good answers and he's really saving us some money too. So I'm pleased, I'm very pleased.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to our last public comment period. It's a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to state, please come to the microphones. Okay, with that, our future meetings, our next regular board meeting will be November 13th at 7:00 PM. Board committee meetings will be November 15th at 6:00 and the board planning meeting the same day at 7:00. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.